Can I advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Cheryl Dinsbury, Andrew Foxley, Myrna Juarez, Gary Miller, Emily Spurrell, Sue Walker, Colin McCallie and Rosie Johnny. Are there any further apologies to report?
Before we move any further, can I just express my congratulations to Leon Tuttle. Leon Tuttle's birthday is today, so can we all wish him a happy birthday? I would like to emphasise this is a key meeting. Can I therefore request that everyone present, including the public, treat this meeting accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with effectively. The use of social media and filming for reporting proceedings is permitted during council meetings. This does not extend to the filming of members of the public, and anyone wishing to film the proceedings are also particularly directed to the very sensitive issue of filming children without the express permission of their parents. May I also remind members that proceedings in these chambers and comments or statements made by members in the course of these proceedings are protected by a qualified privilege. Members should not be reckless in comments they make and should have a genuinely held belief in the truth of statements and comments made. To act otherwise could leave members at risk of legal action by individuals about any malicious or reckless comments is made.
Can we now move on to declarations of interest? Can I remind members that you're only required to declare at meetings any disclosable, pecuniary or prejudicial interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber during consideration of the item. Are there any such declarations?
Can I move on to some very good news? And welcome councillor Claire McIntyre. That comment, by the way, colleagues did not show any bias. It's always good news when anybody comes into this council chamber for the first time. Can I also ask you to congratulate, I think they're not sure whether he's with us tonight, but certainly the election of Steve Rotherham as Liverpool City Region elected mayor. Moving on to item four, minutes of the last meetings. Can I ask if the minutes of the budgets, city council meeting held on the 8th of March 2017 are approved? Okay. Mayor Anderson, I believe you wish to make a statement.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, I just want to think it was important that I objected to the council on the position with regards to our chief executive, Jethro Sjeld, following events over the last couple of days. As you know, Jethro Sjeld was arrested on Monday at the 22nd of May and he was released on bail without charge. I asked to speak to the leaders of the parties on the council this morning and I spoke to two of the leaders and updated them. I also had a meeting of the appointments panel, the appointments and disciplinary panel this morning to give them an update, but also to inform them of the current states of play. It's important, I think, for everybody in this chamber to understand that it's for us as a city council and also under our own constitution in relation to the officer-member protocol, that's important for us not to speculate about what it means. Because quite simply, I always believe that our justice system is based on a simple principle that we're all innocent until proven guilty. And I think we should remember that this remains the case. I spoke to the chief executive and also to the police on Monday and Tuesday and I was informed by the police about the nature of the investigation. I've also took the opportunity over the last couple of days to reflect on how this impacts on the city. And I think I can say to you that the chief executive himself has done the same. And we've both concluded, and he has more importantly concluded, that he will voluntarily step aside from his role for a period once certain investigations are complete. This will also extend to the additional duties that the chief executive has been undertaking as interim head of paid service for Liverpool City Region Combined Authority. I personally and on behalf of the council have accepted the decision. I guess the right decision for the city and to enable our council to actually carry on, deliver the services without distraction. I think it's also important to say that the chief executive has not been suspended by the council and is not subject to any disciplinary process by the council. There is therefore no intention to appoint an interim chief executive and the requirements of the role will be covered by myself as the executive mayor, supported by the senior management team in this committee, including nominating somebody to carry off the responsibilities of head of paid service. It's also important to recognise in all of this that the chief executive took the decision on the basis of the best interests of the city of Liverpool. And I personally thank him for that because it was always going to be difficult, given the press coverage and also the interest from outside of the city for him to carry on regardless. But I want to also reassure members that we'll take the sensible decisions that we have to take at the right time with strong, robust legal advice regarding the employment status of all of our personnel. And what I won't allow is for knee-jerk reactions which place our duty of care as an employer in jeopardy. I also want to make it clear that Liverpool as a city is open for business. It is, from my point of view, business as usual. We have a position with an executive mayor. I will carry out those functions. But we also have what I believe to be a fantastic team of senior management officers in this council, which will help us deliver the services that the people of this city expect. So to those who want to whip up and smear the things that are happening within this city, it won't make any difference. We are a city that is open for business and we are a city that is followed and abided by the principles that everybody in this chamber should hold dear. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to accept any questions on this matter.
So the mayor is willing to accept questions. And can I just make the point that he is willing to accept questions? Can we not, can we please refrain anybody from just making long speeches or anything like that? Questions on that. Thank you very much, Chief. Councillor Kemp.
Thank you very much, Chair. I just want to let you know that it's my intention to be head of your star chart this year and never to get 500 lines, but I'm going to start with these comments today. The elected mayor is quite right to remind us that everyone in this country, unlike others, is innocent until proved guilty. That will either be found at some stage by charges being brought or not brought and will go to court or may go to court when they could be found guilty or not guilty. But until that happens, everyone in this country is not guilty. They...
Sorry, councillor Kemp, just reference to what I said before. Can we get to the questions?
I was just turning to those two questions, which I've got mine on the watch, highlight two minor differences which I have with the statement made by the elected mayor. Not on the fact that the chief executive is recused from this position, because I think he is absolutely right that, for example, had he been here today, that would have dominated the press coverage rather than the elections in New York. So my question is twofold. We seem to have invented a new definition of suspended without prejudice. So I don't expect the mayor to answer this question today, but I would be interested to know, as I think other councillors would, on the number of people who have been suspended without prejudice on PO and SO grades over the last 10 years. The second question I got is the financial position incurred by this council in proceeding with the course as it does. I too have taken legal advice on this matter. And it would appear that should the voluntary separation of Mr FitzGerald from the council continue for anything more than a fairly minimum period, then by paying him, those payments will be ultra-virous. And I would ask the mayor or the city solicitor to make further investigations about the length of time this situation could continue, bearing in mind that we have no guarantees of the length of time that the legal process would take.
Councillor Kemp. Sorry, Mayor Anderson.
Lord Mayor, let me deal with, because councillor Kemp often has difficulty understanding what he doesn't want to hear. And then he also has selective amnesia. Let me tell them that we did not say that the chief executive would be suspended. He says he's voluntarily removed himself. There's big difference. And then we talked about, is he going to get paid? We also, in your previous comments, mentioned that we took the decision without prejudice. To not pay him, I would suggest, is prejudice. And I would also suggest that, given the fact that he's done nothing wrong in this council, there are no issues, disciplinary issues for him to face in this council. It would seriously prejudice this council and put this council at risk if we did such and take such an action as you are suggesting. Let me try and address then the issue of your selective amnesia. The fact of the matter is, he's been arrested, not charged. And I don't recall you when Warren Bradley was arrested, charged and convicted, jumping up and down saying there was anything wrong. And I don't recall you doing it when Mr Hayes was arrested, charged and convicted and carrying on in the roles as councillors. I don't recall you jumping up and down. And let me just remind you about the difference between your administration, when you run it, and my administration, when I run it. We will always do the right thing and we will not take risks with taxpayers' money and the public. Because let me just remind you again, because of your selective amnesia, let me just remind you, because people need to remember this, because we do have a duty of care to all employees of this council. I would remind this council of what happened when the bullying and intimidation of Jason Harrow by the then leaders and members of this council led us to actually pay out £230,000. I will also remind people of what happened with the former chief executive of the council, David Henshaw, and the fact that that cost us £340,000. Over half a million pounds worth of taxpayers' money because of your administration's running and dealing with matters, internal matters, that were couched and acted and said and stated and found guilty of bullying and intimidation of people within the council. There were the charges, there were the allegations made and they were far to be correct. That's why the current progressive leader of the Lib Dems had to stand down, if you remember. But we'll take no lessons off you about how we conduct ourselves. Let me just make it absolutely clear that right throughout this process, I've engaged and worked with not only our internal legal officers but external legal officers. I told you that this morning. I explained that to you this morning. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm sure councillor Radford will agree as a HR head, that it is absolutely important that this city council treats people with the respect and the dignity that they deserve. And as far as I'm concerned, I will stand by that ten principle, basic principle of our, of everyone in this chamber, everyone who lives in this city, that human rights in terms of innocent until proven guilty. And I'll remind you, remind you to bear in mind, the chief executive of this council has not been charged with anything. And in relation to his role as chief executive of this council, he has done nothing wrong. You just need to bear that in mind. And also bear in mind the officer-member protocol when you make some of the comments that you make.
Councillor Crone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have a few questions for you, Mayor. The chief executive will be receiving his full £200,000 salary while he is off for this indefinite period. I'm sure you'll agree that it's very painful for any public body to be paying out money in return for no services in return. Can you confirm whether there will be any additional remuneration to any other members of staff who are helping to cover for the Lord Mayor while he's off? So that's the first one, will there be additional costs? I'm sorry for the chief executive. The second thing is the indemnity. Which indemnity will be applied? The events that have been looked at by the police involve Lancashire Council and therefore it would seem rational that it goes to Lancashire, not Liverpool City Council. And can you confirm that any official roles will need to be undertaken, such as returning officer, especially at this time, which is obviously an election period, will not be carried out by a political member of the council?
In relation to your question about the indemnity, the indemnity of the council applies to, under the constitution of the council, applies in relation to Mr FitzGerald as an employee of the council. It is in relation to his activity here within the council that he's been looked at and spoken to in relation to Lancashire. Okay? So that's the first point. And it's under the constitution. It's been said to external legal advice to make sure that we are following the constitution, following all of the things that we're supposed to do. So that's the first point. The second point you raised about whether he receives his salary, I refer you to the comment that I made to councillor Kemp. He's done absolutely...
I was just referring to whether there will be any additional cost to the council if other people who are fulfilling his G2K...
I thought you also asked the question because you said that if they'll come onto this authority about whether we would get paid or not. I thought you did. Okay, if you don't want me to answer that one, that's fine. No, as far as I'm concerned, at this current time, there will be no additional expenditure. The chief executive will, if I need him to be available to me, to give me advice or to talk to me, or available for anything that I want him to be, he will. I just remind you, he's done nothing wrong in terms of his employment at this council. He's not getting disciplined by this council and there are no charges in relation to this council. What I can also tell you, what I can also tell you is when the chief executive was bailed, was discussed with the police, I discussed it with the police. And there is no problems with him actually being at work in Liverpool City Council, none whatsoever. The police have got no concerns. We took the decision because of the media service and because of people's interest in just him and not what we're doing as a city. That's why he took the decision to stand aside while he cleared his name and while we get to the bottom of it. That's why he's made that decision. So, but if I need, and let me be absolutely clear, if I need to bring in any additional advice or whatever we need to do to move this city forward at any time, that's what I'll do. Okay? But it has, I might not have, it won't have anything to do with the chief executive not being around because he will be available to me if I need him to be. But I'm confident in my competent team of senior officers to be able to carry on delivering the services that this city requires to do and more.
Councillor Radford, I believe you want to ask a question.
It's a question and a suggestion. Can I thank the mayor for inviting opposition leaders to meet with him? Unfortunately, I wasn't available, but I do appreciate the opportunity. And can I say in the broader sense, I think this is quite an unsavory question time. I really don't think it is appropriate at such an early stage for members to be dragging out a debate about personal circumstances. I feel this isn't the way. I would conduct my work at the workplace as a personnel manager. It's not the way I conduct my business as a councillor. It's not the way I conduct my business as a chairman of a community charity. And it's not the way I think the city does itself.
Don't worry, councillor Radford, there isn't going to be a debate, as I said, we're just having questions.
Well, I think you can understand the spirit of the question, saying, the only thing I was going to say is, setting the precedent of legal absence with pay does set precedence. And this could be discussed and should be discussed, I think, not in question time at the council. It should be discussed on the appointments of the speed panel so that whatever we do is consistent to the circumstances as well. And the only thing I would ask the mayor to give consideration of is whether it would actually add to the robustness of the committee to make maybe at some point a variation to include some opposition members, rather than just be all of one party. That might add to the prejudice about healing. But I think that's where these questions should take place.
Lord Mayor, on the first point, my position is a very difficult one. Very simply, my role is to act in the best interest of the city, as always. I welcome your comments about the position being discussed here. But we are an open and honest and transparent administration that will always conduct our business in an open and transparent way with nothing to hide. The fact of the matter is, is that unfortunately, you didn't, couldn't attend, couldn't attend that the meeting was planned. But I invited both councillor Kemp and councillor Crone to attend the appointments and disciplinary panel this morning, which took place immediately. In fact, it was delayed while we had our meeting together. So again, I can reiterate that there is nothing to hide. It would have been very, very easy for me, because it's not a formal process, this is a voluntary arrangement, to actually, if you like, circumvent that and not either discuss it here tonight or to have discussed it at the appointments and disciplinary panel. It would have been very easy to do that. But I didn't and I won't and I never wanted to, because I believe that we should be open and honest with the situation that we're in. Now, how the media organisations deal with that through other people, providing with information or questions, we'll provide the answers to those organisations and to councils in a perfectly open, honest and transparent way. Not putting at this council, as has previously been done in your well-being with Mr Henshaw and Mr Harrow and indeed with other councils that will find guilty of offences. So I'm sorry to mention that, but it really does seem usually hypocritical for me for one member of this council to actually challenge us on what we're doing when he was part of an administration that allowed that to go on and happen. So as I finish, Lord Mayor, I'll say this, that we will continue to act in the right way in the interest of the city. We'll take advice and we'll actually make sure that everything that we do is not putting at risk our city moving forward. Our city remains open for business. There's no problems here. There's no issues here. Our city is open for business and that's what we've been doing today, doing everything that we would expect us to do.
I haven't seen anybody indicate any further questions, so I thank Mayor Anderson for those questions, for all those answers, and asking to move on to announce the appointment of deputy mayor, Liverpool assistant mayor, cabinet members and responsibilities and mayoral leads.
Lord Mayor, I just want to make some comments because you've seen the cabinet positions and they're for you and you also see the mayoral leads. I just want to, because it's the ATM, make some comments just around where the city is and indeed what we look forward to over the forthcoming 12 months before I actually get to the challenges we face and why I've created the cabinet that I have and also with the mayoral leads. Just an update in terms of where we are around the Commonwealth Games. In three months' time, the government will be making a decision. People in the chamber are fully aware of the team that we've put together. Bron Adenaiac and his team along with the other council officers have been working extremely hard behind the scenes. We've got a dedicated team with a board led by Brian Barwood with Denise Barret-Vaxendale. We've engaged at the football club, who are working with us to actually deliver a stadium for us on Bradley Moor Dock. We've also engaged with Peel Holborns, who are working with us as well to deliver on that site the assets that we need in terms of students, sorry, athletes accommodation and all of those things. And we're also looking excitedly ahead to win the competition and actually talking about how we will use our river and the festival, the Commonwealth River Festival, to promote our city, using our river in the best way possible. And I think the site and what we have and the offer that we have is as good as anywhere. I'm absolutely determined that we should go full-blooded to win this competition. And if we do, it will be a great statement of this city vision moving forward over the next decade. But it will certainly put Liverpool in the spotlight in 2022 and beyond. I just want to also talk about the Liverpool promise and I'll mention it a little bit with the cabinet appointments that I've made. It's a promise between our schools and the parents and pupils to improve exam results in the city, bringing together our partners. The Liverpool promise will not only tackle educational aspects of school performance, but other factors as well, such as poor health, work readiness and developing aspiration and ambition. And that's why there is a mayoral lead that will just solely concentrate on education and improve on education standards. We'll also, and again, I'll talk about this just very briefly with the mayoral lead...
We'll also, and again, I'll talk about this just very briefly with the mayoral leads, but we are, as you know, in the city investing £11 million a year in terms of homelessness and rough sleeping. And we deal with around 6,000 families to prevent them becoming homeless in the first place. Our housing face approach, the roots out of rough sleeping group, has been interviewing providers and users of our services and then published shortly an interim report in June with new proposals and new improvements about how we develop that service moving forward. Delivering £11 million each year and getting the same outcome and just supporting people to be dependent on our services and be dependent on actually substances as well is not an option and that's why we've had, and will introduce two new mayoral leads to actually help us tackle homelessness and rough sleeping on the streets. In terms of our housing company, there's nothing more in our manifesto commitments that excites me more about our housing offer and what we propose to do with regard to housing in this city. I believe it will be absolutely transformational. It will actually not only transform our housing offer in this city, I believe it will be a lead, an exemplar of how housing should be done across the whole country. And indeed, I know it excites political parties across the spectrum. Indeed, the Liberal Democrats have actually followed all the and introduced the rent-to-buy scheme within their manifesto, copying major, for example, you couldn't ask for a better endorsement than that. So that, sorry, yeah, I'd rather have a conservative endorsement than a Liberal Democrat. At least you can trust that. The fact of the matter is, we then will be not only providing support for housing, it will be a completely new offer and I'm sure councillor Hunt and the mayoral lead working together will be able to look at that. And I think we are going to also explore the fact that we probably will need to introduce a new housing select committee to look at how we move forward with housing moving forward. But I'm sure councillor Hunt will talk in detail about that at the next regeneration select committee about how we're delivering that. On economic development and investment, there are a number of exciting regeneration projects and opportunities that are being carried out in the city at the moment, each one contributing to the transformation of our city and also creating jobs and creating a sustainable economy for the future. A place we all know about as an exciting opportunity, 38 acres of prime land next to the hospital, one of our deadlock school sites is being transformed. And today I was speaking to the Royal College of Physicians and others that are moving on to that site and a great opportunity. We've also got plans for Mount Pleasant and the car park and the land at the back of the Adelphi, which is all in our ownership and exciting proposals will be moving forward on that too with a design and also a planning application that will probably go in very early next year. So the festival gardens, we've got great opportunities and great interest in the festival gardens, not just for housing but for development in that site. Already, as you have heard about the Cruzliner Terminal, we're actually on with a design being created and made for the Cruzliner Terminal with a planning application going in by the end of this year. We've also secured land from Peel Holtons with regards to developing that, which will give the city council an income as well. You've also heard about the £23 million round infrastructure that's connecting our waterfront to the rest of the city centre through the Leeds corridor. We've also got the exciting news of Everton Football Club and Bradley Moore and the Dock linked to the Commonwealth Games, a great opportunity for one of the most fantastic institutions in the world, not just in Liverpool and the whole country, but Everton is one of the most amazing football clubs in the whole world. I'm honoured to see that. We've got the 10 Streets initiative, which is going to be a fantastic addition as we've got the Baltic Triangle growing so successfully that it needs to expand that we've got 10 Streets, but 10 Streets is no longer 10 Streets, it's about 20 Streets as we actually widen the development of that area. And of course with Liverpool Waters, there's some exciting opportunities, not only with us, with the Commonwealth Games again, but also some of the developments that are now happening on the Liverpool Waters scheme, some of them going to planning and some of them in planning as we speak. And then on roads, one of the things that I remind people of is that if people remember the big dig that was introduced by the Liberal Democrats in 2004, what they did was they skimmed the surface of the roads in the city. They didn't do the roads properly and as a result of that, so you know, 11, 12, 13 years on, those roads are disintegrating really fast and we've got to do something about it. So the bottom line is, we are cracking on with not only repairing the roads, but we'll probably have somewhere in the region of £180 million over the next six years being spent on improving our roads across the whole city. So we are getting on with that despite austerity and despite the government's cuts. I want to then take to some of the challenges that we face in the city and how we're coping with them, but I'm going to just, you know, give out some information around my cabinet, why I've chosen those particular areas as cabinet members and then also talk about the mayoral leads anyway. I'm delighted to keep councillor Adam Bayne as deputy mayor of Liverpool, somebody that has gone from strength to strength in not only supporting me but believing for the council in many, many areas. And as far as I'm concerned, is doing a fantastic job within that particular area. She oversees the political governance of the council, making sure that we're delivering on our manifesto commitments. She's got responsibility for planning and building control and assisting cameras of property and assets and special project although she's not going to claim credit, I'm sure she'll leave that to me for the wonderful purchase that was made by our team headed by Nick Caballan of the QMR. I have to say as well, just to let you know, that the QMR is now full. It's bringing in a revenue of around £1.6 million. There's new jobs going on there, home puts of new jobs and it was something that the Liberal Democrats and I think the Tories opposed as well, but it's now worth in excess of £28 million and it was a fantastic acquisition, many guide it. And I'm honoured to be calling the old Runea Civil Annex for £11 million. What a fantastic deal that was for us and some of that money will be used of course to help us repair some of the roads, but yeah, another fantastic deal, but I'm not going to claim credit for that. And then I'm involved to our assistant mayor, councillor Wendy Sire, who's actually head of Transform and Sport, the Recreation and Living Facilities, our cultural strategy and of course the visitor economy. And some of the things that we've got planned not only for this year with George and Pepe were the things that we've got planned for next year. And you know what, I think we should pay tribute not only to Claire McCollum and her team and Wendy and all the officers on that because, you know, it is absolutely linked to the regeneration and growth and investment in our city. When you think about, when I actually talk about culture being the rocket fuel for our city, it is because without those cultural events and without people coming to see our city, there will be no investment, there would be nobody coming back and investing. And so that tourism sector and that particular sector is a huge driver, I think Wendy put a fantastic job in that. Nick Small, as I said, as assistant mayor, will also now just stick to the responsibilities of education to make sure that we drive up educational standards. He's also going to be in charge of the Liverpool Promise, our needs to make sure that we move as many young people from the list as we possibly can. Also our children's centres protected, our children's centres as we've done despite the new financial cuts that we face. And also then moving on, can I say that we've got councillor Paul Brandt, who not only is dealing with the issues of adult social care within our city, but is also dealing with the changing sort of face of adult social care and the need for us to adapt and change. If we don't adapt and change, we won't cope and we can't cope. So it's a difficult job under difficult circumstances, but I think we're in safe hands knowing that we're actually up at Transform and the Service moving forward. We've got children's services with Barry Kushner again staying in that particular boat, which is the responsibility of safeguarding children as the main role and that's something that we definitely need to continue and also reduce the number of kids in foster care and look after children within the system. I've decided to give a community safety role back at a cabinet level for a number of reasons. Manchester is clearly a warning to us all that the existential threat of terrorism exists. No matter what we do as a city, not just in Liverpool but elsewhere, we can never do enough, we can never ever do enough because there will be people who want to cause mayhem and bloodshed under some mad aim or desire to actually change the way we are as a country. That will always be there and we have to get smarter in the way we do things, working with agencies with limited resources, the police, the fire services, our emergency services. And that role and responsibility of a cabinet member will be working with the public services but working with the private sector to make sure that we're joined up, to make sure that we do things like using our CCTV stock and how we support one another in protecting people as they go about their daily lives in this city. And that's why it's important that we send a clear message that Sound City takes place over the weekend as well as the Liverpool Marathon because nothing, nothing will stop this city, Manchester, Birmingham or any other city in this country from operating. No atrocity, no act of terrorism would stop us from doing that. I've just told you about our housing plans and I think they are absolutely some of the most exciting things that I think as a councillor of 20 years that we've been involved in. And I look forward to not only working with people who can't afford to upgrade their housing, to provide them with an option to upgrade their housing, but allow them to actually have the equity in their house back into their bank accounts and we'll take on that property. We'll also be buying out properties in Tubu, in Anfield and places and modernising them and creating sustainable communities, taking away the rogue landlords who want to snap up cheap properties and actually put three and four lots of families within them. As well as buying new houses, we'll actually be building new houses and we'll actually be refurbishing new houses. That's why it's so exciting and I know Frank Hunt has got that same passion of excitement as me. As I said, with regards to the problems that we face with our roads and improvements and also about our transport network and how we improve that, the street cleansing, our waste recycling, our waste management, our street seed, our parks and our green spaces are all going to come under the highways and city services umbrella headed up by Steve Mumbin. It's a massive, massive opportunity not only for us to bring services back in house and operate them differently.